Okay, you're live.
This meeting of the Moore County Board of Elections to order. Thanks everybody for being here. If you would please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Again, on our agenda with a roll call, please state your name. And when you do that, indicate if you have any conflict of interest with the matters that are before us this afternoon.
Holly Powell, no conflict.
Martin Carpenter, no conflict.
Bob Howell, no conflict.
Antoinette Kelly, no conflict.
Susan T. Adams, no conflict.
Thank you. I will move to the public comment section. And just for the sake of reiterating some key points, we will assume that anyone who has is going to make a comment today and has signed the sheet, has read and agreed to these principles, I won't read them all, but just as a reminder, not only for those who are here, for those who may be watching live or watching, rewatching the video that's archived. Again, the public comment session is not required by North Carolina general statutes, but this board, in accordance with the history and practice of Board of Elections for as long as I know, is in favor of public comment. Remarks should be limited to the agenda of this meeting. The Board may respond during our business session, not during the public comment section itself. We will assume respect and stability without any personal attacks. I cannot imagine that that would happen here. If you would, please address the Board as a whole, not an individual. And there's no discourse, interchange, conversation with any members of the audience. Speakers are, the whole session, per session is limited to 15 minutes with each speaker limited to three minutes a person. So, having said that, we do have one name on our list today, Mr. Joshua Lowery. And does someone have a recommendation for a microphone for Mr. Lowery? So we can, yes, it's recorded, it's part of the archive. It's required. Thank you. If you'd just state your name and address, please.
I'm Josh Lowery. I live at 165 Lowery Court, Weston, North Carolina 27376. I am thankful that the Board has looked into the data that I shared, just with some of the concerns that I noticed when I was going through the report beforehand. And I'm just glad that you guys have listened to it and are looking into better ways to prevent things like this from happening. Things happen, but I'm also glad that there are people like myself who do just help double check things too, just on our own time. It is a pastime for me doing this stuff. Didn't realize that I would be able to help influence anything for, you know, better things, but I am thankful for you guys for being able to stand up and see the problems and work to rectifying them over time. So, just wanted to thank you guys for that.
Thank you for being here. Onto the purpose of the meeting, we have two items on our agenda. First is checks and balances needed to prevent the error made during the first primary election back in March to better ensure election data integrity, as Mr. Lowery has referenced. We have the second item now, in the interest of clarity and simplicity, I won't read the second item on the agenda till we get to that point. I did want to present just kind of an overview for context and framework, what the outline of this section of the meeting that I suggested to Ms. Dixon and to the Board is, I'll make some opening framework. Ask Ms. Dixon to give us her account of what she has done, what the staff has done in order to ensure election integrity. Then I'll ask the members of the Board if they have further additional comments and questions. And I may have some remarks at the end. It depends on whether I think everything that needs to be said has been said. Why is this item on the agenda? I think as we've heard from Mr. Lowery. In late April, it was brought to the Director's attention, some discrepancies in reported totals in two precincts in the March primary, Pinehurst B2 and Carthage. In brief, the expected totals for one or more candidates in one precinct was higher than expected and lower in another based on the number of ballots that had been cast. And more details will follow for the clarification. I note, these discrepancies in no way affected the outcome of the primary elections of any of those races. Nevertheless, Ms. Dixon recognized this matter as a serious concern. She informed me, following a previous meeting on absentee ballot, as we had earlier today. She had already informed the county attorney, the State Board of Elections. She reported the issue to the entire Board. And during, and subsequent to that, during a meeting on April 30th, provided an election, excuse me, an explanation to the entire Board. And that was specifically intended for the Board at that point. Subsequently, the Board asked for a meeting to provide an explanation to the general public, complete with a clear summary of steps to be taken in future elections to avoid this problem. And here we are. Just a couple of final comments, at least from my perspective as an ordinary mortal. The error wasn't a glaring error, as some have described it. Just briefly, Mr. Lowery, on the spreadsheet that Ms. Dixon shared with me, I see 23,100 rows and 19 columns. That's a lot of cells. Did I understand that? So that's kind of the nature of the scope of the data that we're dealing with. Secondly, if the explanations offered by Ms. Dixon are difficult to follow, it's not because of of any lack of understanding on her part or that of the staff, but because the system has fairly complex, the machines, the paperwork, the processes, the technology that supports it expressly in order to safeguard the integrity of our elections is rather involved. Finally, if anybody still has questions about those explanations, please make an appointment to speak with Ms. Dixon and me and one of the Republican members of the Board to come and have a more thorough explanation than is going to be possible at this meeting this afternoon. So, having said that, let me turn it over to Ms. Dixon for her account.
So, Mr. Lowery had brought to our attention that when doing the data, he noticed a discrepancy. And the way that we look at data is totally different than the way that Mr. Lowery looks at data. And so, when he gave me the spreadsheet and trying to understand the way that he was interpreting the data, and I gave a snippet to the Board, which is the long legal sheet. If everyone could please look at that. And for those who are on the livestream, if you go to the BOE main page, I also put the data on the livestream so they can click and look at it as well. I did a snippet of the data so everyone could see. Now, as my chair said, it was 1,400 pages. And so, we had to condense the data down so that I can understand. Now, I'm going to explain it from how I understood it, not from how he was trying to explain it. So I don't want anybody to think that he was saying one thing is just how I understood it.
Right.
So when he was explaining the data to me, we were looking at a particular race. We were looking at the school board race. And we were comparing how one candidate, who was in a particular district, got so many votes in one district, in a particular precinct, over another district. And I was able to come to that conclusion because as me and other staff were talking about it, we were able to compare it to the blue data sheet that we were looking at it. Now, for us, we don't look at data as far as trying to figure out who votes for who, because you got undervotes, you got undervotes, you got some people who just don't vote a ballot at all. We don't look at it that way. But then, when we looked at it, basically, what Mr. Lowery was saying was the one candidate, the precinct that he lived in, in his district, showed a higher, a lower, a higher turnout or a lower turnout than it should have. And that's how we were able to say, okay, let's look at the two precincts that there was a conflict with. And that's what you're looking at. We're looking at Carthage, which that was the school board for District 1, and we're looking at Pinehurst B2. So for this candidate, he had a very high percentage of votes for Pinehurst B2 and a very low percentage of votes in Carthage, which you would think, because he's in Carthage precinct, he would have a higher percentage of votes because that's his district, and a lower percentage of votes in Pinehurst B2 because that's not his precinct. And so, that's how he kind of understood it. But that's not how I thought of it. Because I was like, well, anybody can vote. It doesn't matter what district you are, at school board. You just have to live in a particular district. And that's how people can vote. So as we were looking at, we were looking at everything. The reason why we said the vote didn't get skewed in any way is because the data for Pinehurst B2 was actually Carthage. And the data for Carthage was actually Pinehurst B2. The sticks got reversed. And so that's when we realized what happened. We contacted the State. We spoke to our State Department, our State person up at the State Board, who deals with numbers going into the system. We asked them what could be done. At that time, the State had already finalized their election. He said it didn't affect the candidate. He had put it to legal. And at that moment, there was nothing that could be done. So then, at that time, I reached out to one of the previous people that worked here, told them what happened. And I said, okay, this is what happened. And she kind of went through a checklist with me. She said, well, did you compare the tapes? I said, which is normally what we do. We look at the tapes and the data. I said, it wasn't the data. Because comparing the data and tape, it would have matched. It was the media sticks were switched. And I'm going to show you, because when I say media sticks and everything like that, most people don't understand what I'm saying. I said, that's not what happened. I said, everything that ran through that precinct, all those numbers were valid. It's just the fact that the wrong stick name was in the wrong DS 200. And when we uploaded it, it read for the wrong precinct. So, this is what I mean. So when we-
I'm sorry, Ms. Dixon, as you're getting up here for your explanation just quickly to paint sure. So the DS 200 is the voting machine that tabulates the paper ballots, and that's what you're going to demonstrate with it? And sticks are flash drives that are used for each precinct that are, are they originally at the precinct level during Election Day in a laptop?
No.
They're not? Okay, they are-
They're burned here. I'll explain. So, we burn our media here. Each thumb drive is labeled. We never change the label on the media stick. It never gets changed. Each DS 200 that is sent out is also labeled. These labels never get changed. So what we do is we take the media stick that's supposed to match this label, and we upload that media and we lock it into the machine.
Gotcha.
So what happens is, when that media stick that's already labeled, gets matched to the tag, gets locked into the machine, when it gets turned on, our precinct officials are supposed to make sure that when it comes up, it reads zeros, that we didn't leave any data in there, and that it reads their precinct. Well, that was one thing that didn't get checked. After the end of the voting period time, we have a courier that brings this data back. And they put it in a courier bag. That is labeled with their- It gets labeled in a courier bag with the precinct on it. So then they take that data and they put it in the courier bag. So then there's another way that that courier stick, that media stick is supposed to be looked at. And it gets put in that courier bag. It's also labeled and it's brought up to the office as well.
Ms. Dixon, isn't a copy of the tape also put in the courier bag?
Yes, ma'am.
So there's the media stick with the data and a copy of the tape that gives all the totals.
Yes, ma'am.
And both of them have the name of the precinct on them?
On the tape, everything, yes.
And on the courier bag?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
So, when that comes up, it goes into the person that's uploading. And so, at that time, we're uploading. We're trying to get the information in because we got everybody wanting the numbers. And it wasn't checked. It wasn't caught at that time. Now, like I said, the only thing that happened was, is when that media stick went out, Carthage media stick went into Pinehurst B2. Carthage, Pinehurst B2 media stick went, like I said, Carthage media stick went into Pinehurst B2. B2 media stick went into Carthage. But the data that flowed through there was that data.
Exactly. There was no duplication, no, nothing was omitted.
Nothing.
Right.
So that's what took place. So, all the data was correct. So even if we were to look at the tapes and match the tapes with the data, it was still going to match because the tapes were going to match what went through the tabulator. The tapes were going to match how many ballots. Because they do checks and balances. Everything was going to match with the numbers. It's just the simple fact of how that media stick was labeled. That's the only thing that didn't match in the precinct. So what we did was, and that's your piece of paper that is stapled.
Right.
We put some things in place. Now, what we'll do is, on the first page, you will see how we have began to label every machine on the very inside, where it is, that very first page, this is Tony, yes. So now we put individual labels for our own visual point. And I can get that also for the audience as well. We'll begin to label each machine near the key so that when the poll workers go, they'll see that that key is supposed to be, when they put that key in, and this is also going to be talked about in training, that they need to make sure that when they open that slot before, well, that's for us. That's our check. So before our equipment goes out, we have a checklist. We're going to open, before we close it, one of us will put the media in. One of us will come behind it. We'll check the label. And one will check the media stick. So that's the check and balance now. And we'll check it off. And then, we'll close it off. So we have that check and balance now before it gets closed and it gets sealed now. That's one of the checks and balances that we'll do before we close it off. In our training classes on, and that's, we'll tell the judges, or in our law, in our machine monitor, when they open it up, and I don't know what page that one be, but that's the machine monitor. In our training classes now, we'll tell them to, when they open it up, what they're supposed to be looking for. And they'll have this demonstration to, they always have a PowerPoint to take with them. But they'll have this to take with them now. And we'll stress what areas they're supposed to look at to make sure that everything is matching, to make sure that when that DS 200 is turned on, you're going to make sure that if it's reading absentee in this corner, or if it's reading Pinehurst B Fairborn, or whatever, both areas should be matching. Your tape should be matching before they even sign the zero tape. Everything has to be matching before they sign the zero tape. This is going to be a part of their training in their training materials. That's another checks and balances that we're also going to be doing as well. On Tuesday, when we do law training, we're going to be also telling the judges when, for their training classes, what they need to be paying attention to, because sometimes they may not open it up. But they're, so they're going to get it in PowerPoint. So, we're doing it. They're going to be doing it in training. And we're also going to be having it in law training as well. We're going to be showing them where they need to make sure that everything is matching before they sign that zero tape. When everything does come back, the other checks and balances will be that when the courier brings it back, I will be checking the bag to make sure that the stick matches the data, the information on the bag, of the courier bag now, as well. And that will be my checks and balances. So, before we upload any data, to catch it before we load it. So that would be another check and balance. So, before we will check it in, I will be checking the bags, making sure that the stick is matching what's supposed to be in that bag for that precinct as well. So that will be another checks and balance as well. But we're going to do a lot more visual with them to make sure that they get it in their memory. And like I said, Annie has put the stickers on the inside, on the top of the, on the top of the key, on the inside where you flip the flap open to make sure that they're constantly seeing that what that precinct is supposed to be so that there won't be any mistakes like that.
Right.
Any questions?
Well, I just want to say that I appreciate the fact that once an issue, this issue was identified and you were notified, you and the staff immediately went back through the process to determine where was the point of failure once you identified it. You've come up with, looks to me like, a very detailed way of avoiding that to happen in the future. And you addressed it immediately. You never tried to cover it up. And in today's world, that doesn't seem to happen very often. And I appreciate that. I think everybody else on the Board appreciates that. I hope the people that are watching here appreciate that fact. Problem addressed, solution was done. So thank you very much for that. Murphy's Law is hard to avoid. It just is. But we're doing the best we can, and I think you are too. So thank you and the staff very much for your approach to this.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Board?
I want to thank Josh for identifying the issue because, because the type of election it was and the fact that the ballots were the same at every precinct, it didn't affect the outcome. Thank goodness, you saw what happened and you were able to inform Ms. Dixon so that we can put what she's described in place to prevent this from happening at a time where it would have mattered. Because if we had had different ballots and different candidates at the two precincts involved that got switched, now, we would have discovered it during Election Day because the ballots wouldn't have been accepted in the tabulator. But I think now, what Ms. Dixon has described as the mechanisms that she's put in place as checks and balances will prevent anything like this from happening before. As both Bob and Ms. Dixon have explained, there's a lot of moving parts to an election. Tony and I, I think every, just about every year has been a poll worker, I think, except Bob, at one point or time. But Tony and I have been poll workers here in Moore County. And it's a hard job being a poll worker, especially a chief judge. There's an awful lot to know. And there's an awful lot to balance at the end of the night. And this wouldn't have been caught just by balancing everything. It was simply a mismatch with the name of the precinct. In this case, that's all it was because the wrong stick was put in the wrong tablet. So, I do, I hope you continue to analyze the data. I don't know how you do it. I respect anybody who has the patience to do that kind of analysis. But it's important that we have somebody do it because we want to make sure that everybody's vote counts and every vote counts correctly and it's reported correctly. So everybody's efforts towards that, I think, are really important. Thank you.
Anyone else on the Board? Well, thank you. I think it's clear from what everybody has said that the problem was identified, been addressed efficiently and accurately. And I think this may be evident. We've talked a lot about this one particular instance of the data drives for two precincts being switched. But I believe that it's clear from, from the checklist, the various checks and balances, the illustrated training that will be available for poll workers going forward as we prepare, prepare for a very significant election in the fall, that this process will also ensure that all kinds of other problems don't occur and that election data reporting continues to maintain integrity and to be accurate, and that our processes are clear and transparent. And that we don't take anything, even in this case, that was, several people have noted, did not affect the outcome. That did not make us think that it's not important. Still, any problem is a serious one. And we want to be sure that we address it. As Marty said, I believe we have here. Let's just, one final one that seemed like I'm going back a little bit. We've talked about the steps that will be in place going forward. I assume that means even going forward for next Tuesday's second primary. Yes, everybody? Right, thanks. Anything else on this topic? No, thanks very much, Ms. Dixon. And to your staff, please, and to Mr. Lowery as well. Thank you, Josh. All right. Other item on this afternoon's evening's agenda is the matter of ideas for streamlining drop-off of absentee ballots by authorized individuals at early voting sites for the general election. Ms. Dixon has provided us with a numbered memo from the State Board about that. And I know, as Howell raised this matter at a previous meeting to include on our agenda. And I'm not sure who she did first.
Oh, I'm happy talking about it just for a second to tell you how it came up, how, why I added it to the agenda. And it could have waited because it doesn't really apply now for the election for Tuesday. But I was asked, kind of came up during a discussion of the fact of the early voting plan for November and the fact that we only were going to have two sites, concerns about long lines. And so, the issue was brought up to me by somebody about how could someone, an authorized individual, returning an absentee ballot for a voter to an early voting site, get in and get that accepted at the early voting site as quickly as possible? So I'm glad that should be provided in the numbered note. It does say, in the numbered note, and I don't document, so this, I don't know if this was in effect during the 2020 election, was it? Because I don't remember, is it the one stop site that I worked at either the Ed Center or at VAS? But it says, each early voting site shall have at least- But it says each early voting site shall have at least one designated staff station for the return of absentee ballots. Return of absentee ballots shall occur at that station. It may be set up exclusively for absentee ballot returns while they provide other services such as a help desk, provided the absentee ballots can be accounted for and secured separately from other ballots or processes. So it says have a plan for how crowd control would occur and voters will be directed to the appropriate location for in-person return of absentee, absentee ballots by signage, direct, directing voters, and so on and so forth. So I just wanted to make sure that as we're developing plans for November, that we take all of this into consideration and enable drop-off of absentee ballots to be accomplished without people waiting in line to vote. Now, if they're waiting to vote anyway, that's kind of another issue. But if they're just returning absentee ballots, somehow we need to create a traffic flow that allows them to get to a check-in station. Because I know they have to be entered in the computer, so.
Then they're not entered into the computer, so.
Well, they are, they are logged in.
Not, so they're logged in when they come to us. So they go to the help desk. So for us, they go to the help desk. So what, the reason why they go to the help desk is because a lot of times, and they kind, and they do it kinda different. We send them to the help desk because sometimes a person will come in with an absentee ballot and we have to log them in, the state makes us log them in because they have to be a near relative and so they have to fill out that law. But then sometimes we'll send them to the help desk because sometimes they don't want to vote the absentee ballot and so then we have to destroy it. So we don't, we don't want them cutting the line and we're not quite sure what their, what their purpose is. So that's why they kinda do stand in the line unless we do have somebody kinda saying, okay, if we do see them with the help, um, the absentee, like, what's, what is, what are you doing? I mean, you can ask that question. If it's just dropping it off, we have to make sure we check it too because, um, once they surrender it over to us and if it's not correct, we can't give it back. So then we try to make sure that they check everything. We try to give them that opportunity to make sure everything is done as well. So it all depends on what it is that they're trying to do. But they do go to the help desk. They don't log it, they just log it in a folder and then they send it back.
Is that a change?
As far.
Is that a change?
Logging it into the.
No, because I've worked at early voting sites where it was logged into the computer as returned absentee ballot and there's a dropdown to say who returned it.
It must be a change because, um, they just log it into a.
A hard copy log?
A hard copy log and then it comes back and then we scan it in. Because now, well, with all the checks and balances that you have to deal with the IDs and everything, yes, ma'am, it is a change.
Okay. We don't have to discuss it further today, but I just, I wanted to bring it up because people are anticipating there being lines in November. And I think we need, if somebody is coming back just to return an absentee ballot for somebody else, we might wanna think about how to direct them so they don't have to stand in a voting line.
Do you have a sign that says, "Deliver absentee ballots to the help desk"? And maybe each precinct needs that, so if somebody's coming in, they'll say, oh, I take it to the help desk. And you get a sign that says, "Help desk", then they go there and, and hand it in. Of course, the only person that can not vote that is the actual voter themselves. Anybody that's bringing in, it just has to be delivered.
But then what happens is that they're coming in and they have an absentee and they wanna vote, are you gonna make them go to the help desk, log that in and then go all the way back around? Like, that's the, that's the thing. So it's, it's a little bit complicated with that because depending on, because sometimes if they're bringing back somebody else's stuff, they gotta sit and log it in. And then they have to, we try to do everything with them right there at the help desk. Or sometimes, like I said, it could be their own and they want it destroyed. It all depends on what it is that they're trying to do. And a lot of, I, I mean, I've never heard anyone complain, I'm not quite sure. Now, depending on where their, the location is, here is not so bad. We used to have, and this is my experience, we used to have two separate lines in Hope County. We had absentee line and then we just had a line that was just for people that were just doing regular voting, if they were coming. But my help desk line was not within the enclosure though. But that's, I didn't have the space though, that, that was why. Everybody just kind of, my help desk was somewhere else outside of my voting enclosure because they weren't going in to vote at all. Now, a lot of times, if they want to just drop that off, they're closer, this, at this location is closer, they can just come across the street if they're just not coming to vote at all. I mean, we can look at what type of option because we have to take everything into consideration. If they're just destroying the ballot, if they're just dropping it off. There's so many different things that you have to take into consideration when a person is doing that and making sure that people are just not looking at somebody and they're like, oh, they're cutting the line. And you're having to constantly tell people, no, they're not cutting the line, they're dropping off an absentee because people do kinda take offense to that when they see somebody just kinda moving past them and you're constantly having to have somebody say they're, just like we have to do when we're dropping off a ballot for curbside, curbs, you know, yelling curbside. You know, we have to let people know what it is that they're doing. So we have to put things in place so that people won't take offense.
So how many?
It does, I'm sorry, it does say that you can do it curbside, that you can have your receipt of absentee ballots curbside. I just want us to start thinking about what we're gonna do in November to make this easy.
But I, I mean, you're saying make it easy.
How many people actually come in with a ballot and absentee ballots and say, I don't wanna vote this, I wanna actually vote right now? Because most of the people I've talked to that actually went, got absentee ballots and changed their mind, they just don't bring it in, they just come in to vote.
Some do, because I've had, especially military is really bad. You have some military that will get an absentee because they think they're gonna be gone or they, they cheated. Because with military, it's a same-day registration with the military ballot and they miss the deadline and they'll use that to register and then they'll get the ballot and then they, they don't use it and they'll bring it back and they'll, they'll do that. You have, we have some that did it this last election for the small primary. They requested an absentee ballot and then they brought it in and they voted in person. People do it, they, um, they do it all the time, to be honest. Some of it is the fear that they don't think it's gonna count for whatever reason. Some of it is, well, I didn't think that I was gonna be here and they requested the absentee and they made it back in town. So they decided they just wanna vote in person and they'll bring it. Some will bring it in person, some of them won't bring it back and we, we will tell them that you do need to destroy it because if somebody gets their hands on it and voted for them and return it back, it can look like you voted twice and you can get prosecuted for it. We do have to tell people that and we have told people that and they don't realize that. So you'd be surprised how many people will bring that absentee. I mean, they'll walk, stroll right up into the voting place with that absentee ballot in their hand.
I think we need the sign to let people know that if they've got an absentee ballot, here's where you go. And I, you know, how many, do 10% of voters on Election Day bring in absentee ballots? So that you actually need a dedicated, full-time person?
Well, the help desk is the dedicated.
Yeah, but, but, but that's doing only absentee ballots. The help desk is doing other stuff as well at the same time.
We don't get enough to have somebody designated just to take an absentee ballot. And honestly, that's why we have the greeter. If they see them with an absentee ballot envelope, they, they tell that, they tell them that they have to go to the help, they direct them to the help desk. So, and in November, because it is a presidential, we will have anywhere from two to four help desks at each of the, you know, we'll probably have more up here because the space is bigger. But again, they can just walk across the street here and give it to us. So, you know, I mean, unfortunately, they have to wait in line. That's, that's, you know, you know, they, they're allowed to mail it, return it to one stop or return it to our office. They have way more options than those voting in person. So to me, they still have to wait in line, just like the people voting in person.
And I think the sign as well as the greeter. And that way, the regular voter, the CZ people, they're gonna realize, okay, they've got something in their hand, it looks, I saw that sign, so they're going up to the absentee, the help desk with the absentee ballot instead of getting incensed because somebody's trying to, to cut in front. I just, to make it, you know, the KISS concept, keep it simple. And, you know, the sign might help, just alleviate a little bit, plus the greeter. And, you know, once you get it in there, um, they're being processed almost like somebody else is coming up to what we hope it, the Ag Center will be six desks, six processing points. So suddenly that help desk can become the seventh processing point, I guess, at that point in time. Then they just go over to one of the 10 or 12 places to do the ballot if in fact they wanna do it in person. I guess I'm not, if we set it up properly, I guess I'm not saying it being a, a showstopper, but. But as Holly's saying, we need a way to make sure there is a flow and there's a process.
I don't, I'm just trying, based on the number of votes that Tawana gave us, I'm just trying to say that I think there should be a way to route people who are doing, doing nothing but returning absentee ballots directly to where they need to go without standing in the line to vote.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 they.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, they get directed to the help desk directly. And I personally would rather dedicate a whole, uh, somebody to working the curbside computer to keep that going. I mean, just because in 2020, we had a ton of curbside voters. And they were, and it wasn't just one or two, it was three and four people in a car.
Right.
So we, um, are talking about putting a curbside computer with just a, um, person working that check-in desk.
That would be great.
So that, and it, it'll be right inside the door here and at Aberdeen Recreation Center so that that check-in person is just strictly for curbside. Because I'd like to keep that, get that a little quicker than, and then they don't have to wait in line at the help desk.
Right, but I think you're right. If the combination of, um, assign the greeters with an IOP for absentee ballots, uh, direct them toward the, the help desk. And if we have, add what help desk, and it sounds like we do, it seems like that addresses the.
I mean, here, I think we can, we'll be able to fit anywhere from two to four help desks. The Aberdeen, I'll have to get in there, we may be able to squeeze in three. I just have to get in there to really see where the table space. Because I just don't want voters on top of each other, so.
I think we'd, we'd probably just look at the worst-case scenarios for, uh, people coming in and voting in the car, uh, the long lines. That's why, you know, we've been talking about at the Ag Center having maybe up to six check-in stations for people to go through. And if we suddenly decide we've got a lot of people in line, do we have the flexibility either to have, to come across the street and get more computers to check in more people? I want us to be able to expand the capability if in fact we get a lot of turnout for early voting. Uh, I think six check-in stations at the Ag Center, hopefully four at Aberdeen will be enough. But if we suddenly decide or see that it's not, then we need to be able to respond quickly and add one or two more computers for this timeframe. Maybe it's a noon timeframe, whatever, to make sure we can handle the people that are there. And then if that heavy flow stops, then we can back off a little bit. I, I'd like to plan for the worst-case scenario and hope for the best. And I think with this, with only two sites, we need to kind of plan for the worst-case scenario, what do we do if this happens? Be ready to act at that point in time and hope it doesn't.
We usually send extra laptops and printers over there just in case something should happen to a laptop, you know, goes down or screen.
Do we need to have two or three extra people at each site this time? Because if things start expanding, we need to have the people there to respond quickly. I mean, it just, I'm, I'm looking at it.
We have people on that, um, that, so, say like at, across the street, Annie will have like 10 or 11 people. And then there's people who will sign up and they're like, I can work. So if she needs extra people, we can call them to come and work. So we have, that's why we wanted to do the two because we can get people there if we needed more people.
I'd almost like to have them available on the spot, either here or over there.
If I don't need them, then I have, that, that's killing a budget. And I'm not trying to be funny when I say that because sometimes you can have too many people there and I don't need them there because there's, you got during lunchtime, that's when you need everybody there. And when your lunchtime crowd kinda, you know, settle, then you don't need all those people there. And then all of a sudden, when you got your people coming home from work, then you need all those people there. But that's by that time, you, you got your shift changing.
We'll probably get a good idea the first couple of days. We got Thursday, Friday, then we got the Saturday. And see how those three, and if we suddenly see renegated, then we go to our crisis plan and say, okay, now we have to add. And we have people standing by that we can bring in and we have extra computers if need be. I just wanna be able to respond if we have a heavy flow of early voters. That's, I wanna make sure we can respond.
Now, it's a good concern and I, as Tawana said, I think that's one of the calculations and trade-offs that we made when, at the meeting when we decided two sites rather than three, it was two sites that are very well-staffed and very well-equipped so that we can avoid the kind of long lines at yours. And again, the, the, the deal about the long lines. And I think, you know, we are doing everything we can to make sure that everybody who wants to vote can vote. There's not, I don't wanna be cavalier or dismissive about this. There's not a guarantee that you won't have to wait in line. We do all that we can to minimize that. The, the reason is not only for inconvenience but because it's inconvenience can dissuade people from voting and send them on the run. That's what we, clearly, Marty, that's what we want, want to avoid. But it sounds to me like, um, we've got that capacity. But we do have some folks who have said that, you know, on relatively short notice, call me up and I can come in. And as you said, we've, we've got a couple of days, we can see what the bypass is at the beginning of the day.
You also have to remember, the state, the state allows us to have a line. The state basically says, as long as you're processing them in a timely fashion and, and productively, you're allowed to have a line. So I, and I have to remind my coworkers because then they get nervous and they start making mistakes and they start trying to go too fast. But it's okay to have a line as long as we're still processing them in a timely manner. We'll, we'll continue to keep processing them. And, and that's another reason why we have the site manager. So they'll be able to say, hey, we have a line, but now it's getting a little out of control. And worst-case scenario, we, one of us can run over here or there to, until, say, our backups come, right? So, uh, we always have that as well.
How long does it take to, to process, person comes up to check in? Is that two minutes, three minutes? Yeah, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't. So what I'm, what I'm looking at is, let's say it takes three minutes.
See, that's not the issue. The issue is, is when they sit down, they ain't done their homework and they're sitting, they're taking forever holding up a seat. That's the issue because I, it don't take long to check a person in. It's not taking them forever to fill out that ballot. Depending on how long that ballot is, and not for being.
It's back and front.
That's what holds you up.
Well, I thought it was the check-in. So how many stations are we gonna have for people to actually sit down and vote? I guess if that's the issue, then what, we need 20 stations?
Well, we'll have more, you know, because we're gonna have both the, the double space. So we can have anywhere to 15 to 20 voting booths and 10 to 12 sit-down chairs. I think we, you know, I wanna stress on Election Day because in early voting, there's a ballot table for checking. On Election Day, it's a little different because we number our ATVs, so we only have one ballot table. So typically what happens when there's a line on Election Day, it's checking, it's processing them faster than the ballot table. There's a backup at the ballot table.
Okay, I didn't realize that was where the backup was. And so I guess that's why I'm saying, can we, can we expand the number of ballot tables and then chairs for those that wanna sit down?
Yes, on, during early voting and on Election Day. Some of the bigger precincts like Seven Lakes, Pym. some of the bigger precincts like Seven Lakes, Pioneer City, they have plenty of room. We can give them all the voting booths or tables and privacy panels that they want. And those, those bigger precincts, they'll get 10 to 15 voting booths and, you know, 10 to 15 privacy panels.
As long as we can react.
Yeah.
Well, we have video cameras at the two early voting sites like we did in 2020 so people can see how long the line is before they go.
We can, we can certainly, I know IT set that up.
That was really helpful.
I can ask Jamar, because he was here, and probably helped Chris set that up. Because Chris, our IT director, was the one who kind of really did that. But I'm sure Jamar might be able to help.
Cameras turned on.
Yeah, we had cameras at, um, we had all four.
I think there were all four.
Okay, so they could look online on our website.
Just to see outside how long the line was.
We can process 120 voters an hour. You're taking five minutes for the time you check in until you actually vote. No, no, I said, I love saying from the time you check in until you vote, if the average is five minutes, that's, you know, you got six people.
Don't forget, they have to check voter ID. It's not just, it's not always that fast.
Sometimes like if they're mumbling or, or my coworkers having trouble hearing them or, you know, the voter is allowed, if they can't get, they can't speak, they're allowed to write it down. So it does take, there's some scenarios where it might take a little longer to check.
That's what I'm trying to, what is the average time for the person who comes in front of the desk, checks in until they voted and they walk out the door? Because then we can project from there if we've got six check-in stations and it's five minutes from start to finish.
Every voter is due.
I'm not saying average, I'm trying to come up with an average to project how many people we think we're going to process in an hour. No, because the whole thing is about the line and how do we shrink the line, whether it's the absentee line or whether it's the regular voting line, either one.
But I don't think we have to resolve it tonight.
Food for thought, let's put it like that.
I, I think there's ways that we can discuss trying to streamline the process between now and early voting in November.
And the kind of, yeah, that, that wasn't the expectation. But that we started to think about it, that we do reasonable preparation in advance, that we build an expanding capacity once we're underway.
Marty, you can ask all your friends to tell them how long it takes them to vote on Tuesday.
Good luck.
And I'm up to divide by X. Here's your average.
Everyone would believe you can pull the lever from a party.
That's right. All right.
It's all right.
Anything further on this particular topic? Now I'm tempted to say no, there's one. Is there any other business from the board, from the director? Yes, and that is, thank you again for the members of the public and the press who joined us today. Please come back and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Do you think so? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.